Fourth meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, you called before.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Cora? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Hedrick is absent and Mr. Bizani is absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation by Pastor Gorilla from Newington Baptist Church?
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much, Lord, for the town we live in, for the place we call home. God, I pray that this evening, as we meet, as we plan, Lord, that you would speak powerfully, Lord, that you would, in some ways, help each one of these men and women as they lead us in this county, Lord. Give them wisdom. We pray, Lord, for protection. We pray for grace. We thank you, Lord, at this time of year, that we are reminded, Lord, certainly of your presence, your life, your death. And we thank you, though, tonight, that we have this opportunity to be together. And I pray, Lord, again, that we would be about your business this evening. We thank you. In your name we pray. Amen. Join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of amendments from December fourteenth.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Next item is approval of consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is matters presented by the board. All right, I've got one thing. I'd just like to ask the board, would any of you want or feel that you need tutorial on constitutional law?
That's why I called Ted.
Okay, thanks.
Or Mr. Wilmot, I should say.
Next item on the agenda, if nobody else has anything, is county administrator items.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I want to do is give a congratulations and a thank you to all the people who were involved with the Daffodil Festival and the Daffodil Show this weekend. I think everybody was disappointed and all the year's work and having to cancel Saturday, but Sunday more than made up for it. And according to the director, Ms. Legg, there were about fifteen thousand people, and I believe it, and if you look at some of the pictures, it's just massive crowds that were here. It was great. The vendors said that they did well. Out of about two hundred and twenty or more than that vendor spaces, only a handful did not show. So that was great news, too. It, the, you know, it takes a village to raise a family. It takes a village plus to put on a festival. So want to thank everybody from, and I'm going to miss people, but definitely want to thank the staff at Parks, Rec and Tourism and the staff's families because they came in and helped at four thirty in the morning. A whole crews of them helping for what is normally done by other part-timers that were not available because of it being moved to Sunday. We had everyone from church volunteers, the sheriff's trustees that helped, civic groups, all kinds of other volunteers. So we just, all of us who went and are proud of our major event for the year, we should high five one another and thank all those folks. Next, I want to remind everybody of a couple of things. The hazardous waste cleanup is on the fifteenth, I mean hazardous waste collection is on the fifteenth. And some good statistics, but they're also kind of scary, is the statistics that I just put somewhere from the cleanup day. And I think there they are. So, again, a lot of volunteers out working at cleaning up at fifty-two locations, four hundred and ninety-five bags of trash, seven hundred and forty volunteer hours, and twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-five pounds of trash collected, which is amazing, but again, sorry that it's out there. And also, one more thing about the Daffodil Festival Katie wanted to pass on, that there is a survey. So if people go to the Daffodil Festival website, they can express what they liked, didn't like, et cetera, and give some good feedback for their planning of next year's event. And final thing is, we have a reminder to the public that we have a budget work session tomorrow at six o'clock here. Thank you.
All right. Next item are scheduled presentations. It's a presentation of resolution of recognition for John Singleton for service as court-appointed counsel. Mr. Singleton, would you move forward? Resiglution, resiglution, recognition for John A. Singleton. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors has learned that John A. Singleton has served as court-appointed counsel for indigent defendants in the General District Court since two thousand and seven. And whereas the legal representation of indigent persons charged with criminal offenses is a right protected and guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States. And whereas John A. Singleton has notified the court that he stepped down from his duties as court-appointed counsel on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas John A. Singleton has been dedicated to serving the court and citizens of Gloucester as court-appointed counsel for fifteen years. And whereas the performance of his duties and responsibilities and his working relationships were always characterized by his obvious dedication to the court and citizens of Gloucester County. Now, for, therefore be it resolved that Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby congratulate John A. Singleton and deems it an honor and privilege to present this resolution of recognition for his service to the court and citizens of Gloucester County. And further be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors, the judge and staff of General District Court, and the citizens of Gloucester County desire to acknowledge John A. Singleton's fifteen years of dedicated service. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. I always try and keep things in threes. So number one, thank you very much to the board. I appreciate this. This is a great honor to Mr. Wilmot for organizing this and taking care of everything. And to Judge Revere, who is our judge here in Gloucester County in the General District Court. She is a great judge. We are very lucky here in Gloucester County to have Judge Revere. And number three, to say that justice system without representation is not justice. And the court-appointed attorneys in Virginia are the lowest paid in the United States, but we all take it very seriously. So thank you very much for this. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Gibson?
Before John leaves, I just wanted to also congratulate him. I have shared office space with John since coming up on fifteen years now and have been law partners with him for ten years. This is our ten-year anniversary of our firm. And what I can tell you from watching him firsthand every day is that he pours his heart and soul into every case and for every client. And Gloucester County has benefited so greatly from his representation of those who can't afford legal counsel, and I just want to join in congratulating him.
It's ironic that fifteen years and fifteen years, he was getting away from you, right? Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Bapu. Ted did. Pooh. Maybe she stepped in it. The next item on the agenda is the new county logo. Mr. Shepherd?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Wilmot, Ms. Steele. I'm pleased to be here tonight to formally present to the public something that I hope everyone will find exciting and a major step forward for our county. It's been a long time coming. As many of you know, our department has been working methodically since two thousand and twenty to establish a unified brand for Gloucester County. This has included a set of items that our residents and, most importantly, our tourists and those who want to come visit Gloucester can easily distinguish how our organization stands out. One of the largest components of the branding initiative is that of a logo. So that leads us to the question, why do we need a logo? Because we already have a county seal. County seals have been used throughout history to authenticate official documents. A logo, conversely, is a mark that represents an institution's identity in a way that makes it memorable to the public, to the community, to us, and to those who want to visit Gloucester. It's important to understand that a logo isn't designed to replace the county seal. Many localities continue to utilize their seals for official documents, especially the Board of Supervisors and related documents to the board. Our county seal was not intended to really market the county and depict the amenities that we have to offer. And as with most county seals, they're small, many of them look alike, and most importantly, do not market product lines and what communities have to offer. The logo, which is intended to become the centerpiece of the county's branding efforts, will over time become a universally identified feature of Gloucester. One of the more familiar logos that we see often as we travel, especially up and down I sixty-four, is that of RVA. Several years after this logo was unveiled, locals of Richmond began referring to themselves as being from the RVA. Many of us have probably never seen the city's seal until we see it on the right-hand side of this slide. The next two slides show more localities in the Commonwealth that currently use a logo and a seal. We obviously see York County and James City County the most around here because of their proximity to us, and we can now easily recognize what their logos represent. The bottom line is that Gloucester has so much to offer, not just to tourists, but to those of us who call it home. We have beautiful waterways, open farmland, community parks, and our rich history that complements those assets. So it was virtually impossible to create a logo that would incorporate everything. If we were to do that, the logo would have lost its meaning and become a jumbled-up disaster. So in consultation with multiple county departments that would utilize the logo on a regular basis, we established the logo that you're seeing here. The green G speaks for itself, and the blue waves represent our pristine waterways that so many of us enjoy. Coincidentally, the city of Virginia Beach unveiled its new logo just recently and is somewhat similar to what we have here. But the interesting thing is, is that we came up with their design first. We just didn't get to launch it before they did. We're confident that the design of this logo is clear and simple, and it doesn't pose the question of what is a beehive and how is it significant to Gloucester. In developing the logo, we utilized colors that remain consistent with our county seal. Remarkably, those colors reflect our green spaces and blue waterways. The G, which you see here with some various examples of county departments listed underneath, we're confident that will become something that the community and tourists will easily come to recognize over time. On this slide, you see some examples of how the logo is adaptive to our marketing materials. You see here the flyer on the Daffodil Festival where the G is incorporated into the title. And here's a few more examples. If you've noticed, if you've driven by the Stewart Building, the seal on the top of that sign was recently replaced with the new logo. We're in the process right now of putting logos on the county vehicles, ordering new business cards with the logo, and coming up with a unified email signature for all county departments so that everyone can recognize the correspondence easily, being from county employees and county departments. Finally, the big question of the day, which I'm sure many people have wondered, is how much has this effort cost us? So the answer really involves mainly internal staff time. We were fortunate to have Susan Ammons, our tourism coordinator, come onboard with us about a year ago. We began meeting with her and telling her things that we'd like to see in a logo, and she started giving us some examples. In the end, the logo that you see here was something that she came up with, and I'd really like to publicly recognize Susan, if you don't mind standing. We really do appreciate all of her efforts. We couldn't have made it this far without her. So if you look and see some other localities, Roanoke being the prime example that we researched, spent upwards of two hundred and thirty thousand on their branding. And we've spent staff time and minimal amount of money with the new logos on the vehicles and the business cards. I just want to give credit also to a few other departments that contributed alongside us, Parks, Recreation and Tourism, Information Technology, and County Administration. So that ends my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any questions or comments. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And this is not directly for Mr. Shepherd, but to Ms. Steele's staff. I mean, this is a fantastic job, and especially being able to do it in-house. I mean, I know that we have Roanoke, so it would be interesting to find out at some point if we ever do what Virginia Beach spent, because I bet it was more than two hundred and thirty thousand.
Can only imagine.
The work that we did and the staff time, I think it was a well-done use of their time to get this done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment period. You can come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and you have three seconds, I mean, three minutes to talk.
Yeah, all right. We'll be here one at a time.
You wish.
Thank you.
Catherine Carter, Abington District. I'm one of the people of the fifty states of America. My request a month ago to be placed on the agenda tonight was ignored and thereby denied. So several of the people have seemed fit to do the presentation under a three-minute restraint of freedom of speech. According to the Virginia Constitution, Article One, Section Twelve, "Freedom of speech and of the press, write peaceably to assemble and to petition." That the freedoms of speech and of the press are among the great bulwarks of liberty and can never be restrained except by despotic governments. That any citizen may speak freely, write, and publish his sentiments on all subjects, being responsible for the abuse of that right. That the General Assembly shall not pass any law abridging the freedom of speech or the press, nor the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. We are here peaceably to assemble and in the love and peace of Jesus Christ. There are copies of the Virginia Constitution, Article One, Bill of Rights, for those who wish to have a copy. You will understand the following presentation better if you could reference each right that is mentioned with an explanation why it is important. Note, the preamble says, "A declaration of rights made by the good people of Virginia in the exercise of their sovereign powers, which rights do pertain to them in their posterity as the basis and foundation of government." Take particular note of Article One, Section Seventeen. Construction of the Bill of Rights shall not be construed to limit other rights of the people not therein expressed. The other forty-nine constitutions of the states of America and the Federal Constitution of the United States of America have some enumerated rights that our founders did not put into the Virginia Constitution. And all the fifty-one states and federal government constitutions have a section or amendment that states other rights belong to the people not enumerated in those constitutions. So when I state I am a member of the people of the fifty states of America, I claim all of their enumerated rights and others that are not mine as well. Now, we the people present usurped unalienable rights at equity of Virginia stages three and four.
Susan Austin from New York District. Ben Jealous spoke at his book signing a month ago in this historic courthouse where our forefathers exercised freedoms of unrestrained speech and press to peaceably assemble and to redress grievances at the public will. They exercised fundamental principles. Ben Jealous inspired the spirit of freedom as he captured the essence of America's generosity of spirit our nation is renowned for worldwide, or used to be. Where did this spirit of generosity come from in a nation so diverse as ours? It's by the grace of God and the fundamental principles of law as written into our Virginia Constitution, Article One, Bill of Rights, based on the eternal laws of nature and of nature's God, common law. George Mason authored the Bill of Rights, which was the first constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, passed on June twelfth, seventeen seventy-six, at the First Constitution Committee of Virginia. Twelve days later, the same committee passed the Second Constitution of Virginia, which was prefixed by the Bill of Rights. Among other members of Virginia's first constitutional committee was James Madison, the future father of the Constitution of the United States of America. Madison was a student of theology and Hebrew at Pennsylvania College, later Princeton University. Hebrew is the ancient language of the Bible books of law, the root of common law. Thomas Jefferson arrived two weeks into the meeting, and his draft of the Virginia Constitution was not approved. However, he carried the June twenty-ninth, seventeen seventy-six Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia to Philadelphia, where he penned the Declaration of Independence, which was signed just five days later on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six. Article One, Section Three, Government instituted for the common benefit. That government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection and security of the people, nation, or community. Of all the various modes and forms of government, that is best which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety and is most effectually secured against the danger of maladministration. And whenever any government shall be found inadequate or contrary to these purposes, a majority of the community hath an indubitable, inalienable, and indefeasable right to reform, alter, or abolish it in such a manner as shall be judged most conducive to the public will. We're here according to Section Twelve, peaceably to assemble and redress grievances in the love of Christ for the sake of posterity.
So you all agree that you don't need a tutorial in the Constitution, but that's kind of like the Bible. You don't really know it unless you're doing it. My name is Diane. I'm in the Ware District. Okay. Who usurped the people's inalienable rights? Who allowed it? To answer these questions, there is an implied responsibility of two entities. Virginia Constitution, Article One, Section Two, people the source of power. That is, all political power, all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people. That magistrates are their trustees and servants and at all times amenable to them. Responsible of the local governing body, trustees and servants. Article One, Section Three, government instituted for common benefits, that government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection and security of the people, nation, or community of all the various modes and forms of government that is best which is, that is best which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety and is most effectually secured against the danger of maladministration. When the parents, teachers, and the community constantly come before the school board or the Board of Supervisors to redress grievances of an oppressive curriculum and the resulting criminality in the schools and the continued ignored and continually have their rights and their children's rights violated, the governing bodies, i.e. the trustees and servants, most rightfully bear the blame of encroachment. Responsibility of the people. When the people fail their duty, according to Article One, Section Fifteen, to maintain a free government, by frequent recurrence to the fundamental principles, the blame is on the people. I hope the camera's catching this. Qualities necessary to prevention of free government, that no free government nor the blessings of liberty can be preserved to any people but by a firm adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality, that means we don't get a Costco hopefully, and virtue. By frequent recurrence to fundamental principles and by the recognition by all citizens, that was editorialized, that they have duties as well as rights, and that such rights cannot be enjoyed save in a society where law is respected and due process is observed. The master is liable for the injury done by his servant. Since ed equity, the Virginia Stage One, is implemented in two thousand and twenty, in Gloucester County Schools, students, parents, and teachers report unlawful pornographic classroom instruction, sexual encounters in the halls and bathrooms, molestation, vandalism, and felonious criminality endangering the health and safety of students and teachers, rendering the government inadequate to secure the happiness and safety of the people. At the twenty-two, twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two Gloucester School Board Budget Meeting, a teacher asked, why don't you talk about something relevant like CRT? CRT is being taught, and it will only get worse.
Hi, I'm Roxy in Joseph Barber. How are you guys doing tonight?
I'm in which district do you reside in?
What district am I? Mobington? Yes. No problem. No problem at all. Critical race theory. Okay, here we're going to go with a definition of what it is. Critical race theory questions the very foundations of the liberal order, including enlightenment, rationalism, and principles of constitutional law. Critical race theory derived from Marxist critical theory is the ideology of the ed equity equity Virginia CRT and ed equity Virginia focus on negative aspects of race. Do you guys know what this stuff is about? Critical race theory, I mean, it's pretty crazy. Y'all do know what it's about? How does it work out? I mean, seriously, how does it work out in the classroom?
Ma'am.
Oh, I'm not allowed to ask you questions.
I'm going to pause it because, well, I'm going to give you some more time. The board doesn't typically answer questions. It just gives you the opportunity to speak and if you ask a question, we try to get back to you.
Okay, okay, okay. So I did ask a question and somebody will get back to me on it?
Whether the board is aware of what critical race theory means?
What it means and how it's affecting things.
I'm not sure that's a question capable of the board to answer. So why don't you continue?
Okay, okay. Victimization, sexual orientation, classroom pornography, yet the Board of Supervisors and the school board responsible for curricula are in violation of their oaths of office to support the constitutions of Virginia and the United States of America. They exorbitantly fund the CRT curricula that aggregates fundamental principles of common law and fall fail to secure fundamental rights of staff and students of Gloucester County Public Schools. In contrast, equality theory structures the Constitution of Virginia, Constitution, Article One, Bill of Rights enumerating some unalienable rights. Equality theory never changes and our unalienable rights are grounded in God's eternal law. Ed equity Virginia and Gloucester County Public Schools is well into Stage Two, evidenced by increasing violence in the schools. Stages three and four are approaching for school year 2023 and 2024. I'm left-handed. Okay. Gloucester County Public Schools teachers must take mandatory legislated CRT-based cultural competency courses that cost at least $100,000 in one other county with a student body of 4,000 for one remote instructor. It's a lot of money. The superintendent's role is an ally to the CRT agenda. Ours became Superintendent of the Year with plunging student performance, with called-off exams due to a pre-planned extended lockdown with a maximum of one COVID case in any school and by a six-to-one vote. January 2023, superintendent announces a windfall of $100,000, of $1 million, non-discretionary COVID money. 2023, 2024, GCPS enters Stage Three of Ed Equity Virginia. Is my timer up? Okay, the school board has asked to hire a PR person to promote the positive things happening in Gloucester County Schools. Is the PR hiree actually a coordinator chief as described in the roadmap to equity? The equity coordinator chief must have authority with skills and expertise enhanced by their personal lived experience, a face of equity, that positions them for public scrutiny. So the superintendent and school board will be required to be vocal champions and demonstrate commitment to the work of the chiefs and to amplify their leadership experiences as members of marginalized communities. I'm done. That's, that sounds very disturbing. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Good evening, Clayton Austin, York District. Equity coordinators, chiefs will have CEO cabinet status and authority. They must have flexibility, latitude, and opportunity to facilitate authentic stakeholders, community, and family engagement. Engagement is adherence to the party's cause, according to Noah Webster, 1828 Dictionary of the American English Language. Is this party Marxist? Yet parents and volunteers remain locked out. I am a parent and we are not allowed to go through the school to check on things. The chief's sole focus is to promote equity through an equity action team, a small group of division leaders to shepherd the school system through the entire process with racially diverse team members. When Portland, Oregon, the whitest city in the U.S., reached this stage, CRT indoctrinated minors had highest arrest rates. Would the baseball bat that demolished the Gloucester County locker room next be deployed to smash small business windows? The new superintendent will come from a slate of candidates recommended by the State Board of Education who are CNT indoctrinated and will promote this chief PR hiree. Why is a PR person necessary? Will the chief PR person restrain freedom of speech to regress grievances of criminality in the schools? Are the people of Gloucester tonight willing to instruct the Board of Supervisors to instruct the school board to immediately remove CRT education equity VA curricula from Gloucester County Public Schools and institute an equity theory-based constitutional fundamental principles curricula to include verbatim teaching of the constitutions of Virginia and the Constitution of the United States of America? So, say yes. The curricula will have its origins in common law rooted in the King James Version of the Bible as text, which contains the language and framework of our Constitution as penned by James Madison. All students will know that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Then the Board of Supervisors and Gloucester County Superboard and Superintendent will uphold their oaths of office to protect the unalienable rights to educate students, to maintain their duty, to preserve our free government by frequent recurrence of fundamental principles. Are the good people of Gloucester willing to instruct the Board of Supervisors and the school board to read the Virginia Constitution, Article One, Bill of Rights? If so, answer yes. Are the good people of Gloucester willing to read their posterity, Virginia Constitution, Article One, Bill of Rights, and instruct them in frequent recurrence of fundamental principles in order to end despotic government and to ensure the blessings of freedom for Gloucester to this day forward? If so, answer yes.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Mr. Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had one comment submitted from Howard Mowry, York District. Can you believe I made a liberal mistake as the only speaker at the public meeting on taxes for the current year 2023? Thirty-eight thousand citizens could care less that you invade their net pay annually and leave them with less to live on. My mistake was I forgot to proofread and the local scribe caught the mistake, up in lieu of down. I should have said down by thirty cents on personal property taxes. We will still be able to survive as a local government. Look at Virginia Beach, a subtle message is being sent out to the public, tons of free boxes of food, first come, first served. Unemployment is on the rise by the thousands nationally, but we hear nothing locally. Who is fooling who, or are the credit cards still holding the glue of the system together? As you consider this current budget, realize some departments are an annual liability and the taxpayer must eat the cost. On the other hand, not counting our enterprise fund utilities, consider whether other functions have an expenditure cost greater than revenue. Cut this year, or if a five-year expenditure is greater than revenue, eliminate from the budget the line items that show this deficiency. The citizens overall will be most grateful. I realize for this to happen, the sky would have to fall. As for Little England Road, what a management disaster. VDOT did a horrible job trying to appease the citizens who live on that road or travel it daily. The proper correction will not occur until a school bus tips over or a car or truck takes out a series of mailboxes on private property. I would suggest that the administration revisit and evaluate for yourself what a masterful job was accomplished with our tax dollars. You can still feel the holes underneath the new pile on top. I thank you for your time. Those are all the comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right. We'll move to the next item. There's no public hearing, so we'll go to the regular agenda. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning map to classify 9.92 acres in the Abington District from B1 conditional to B1 conditional with modified conditions. Mr. Tucci Ortiz.
Good evening. Wait for the PowerPoint to come up. This is rezoning Z 2301, which, as Mr. Hudson mentioned, is really a proffer amendment. The first slide actually has a mistake, it says a public hearing, but one of the decisions she'll have to make tonight is whether to waive the public hearing requirement. So just some background, this property is located on the west side of Route 17, 6338 George Washington Memorial Highway, at the southwestern corner of the intersection of Route 17 and Abington Glebe Lane. It's currently developed for the Gloucester self-storage in the rear and the coastal community church in the front. They're requesting to remove the property requirements for landscaping, the buffering along 17, and the other commercial uses on the property and the mini warehouses. The surrounding uses of the Gloucester Toyota to the east, St. James on the Glebe England Church, and farmland to the west, undeveloped wooded land to the south, and then Kenout Shuttet on the north. The property was originally zoned from suburban countryside to be one business in 2003 through rezoning application Z 2007, which included a proffer statement containing fifteen proffered conditions, and that's in your packet. So it included, at the time, they actually weren't committed to doing mini storage, so a lot of the proffers were if it was developed as mini storage. And so there were setback requirements and prohibition on specific uses, and then the landscaping and buffering requirements. At the time, and still to this day, they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception to establish a mini warehouse, so they did that subsequent to getting their rezoning to be one. And the self-storage units were construction with increased setbacks according to proffer 13 and the development screen based on proffers 1, 10, 11, and 12. So the application is focused on the red area there to remove some of the screening. There is some of it already there, but just to give a background, the applicant received approval for an amended site plan in 2019, and the intent was to develop additional storage units. They met all the requirements of their proffers and during site plan approval, it was approved based on those proffers. The final step in getting their building permit closed out was for a site inspection and some of the landscaping that was required as part of those proffers was not installed. We met with the owner and the applicant, and currently, none of these requirements would be required for a plan that came in today, and the proffers were done, if you recall, we used to have the highway corridor overlay district, which was then converted to the highway corridor development district, and a lot of the landscaping requirements were removed. So we said they either had to comply with their proffers because staff didn't have the authority to change it or to come back to the board and ask for the proffers to be amended, and that's what they decided to do. So again, the two proffers they proposed to remove are the irrigation system for the landscaping and then some of the landscaping, or the requirement for the landscaping to screen the warehouses from the other commercial uses on the property and from 17. All other proffers that were in the original rezoning are intended to remain. So the underlying zoning is B1, and back when it was rezoned to B1, the adjacent properties were already zoned B1, so it is in the highway corridor development district. And again, the special exception was granted in 2003. None of these changes would affect the special exception approval that was granted to them. Currently, the zoning ordinance doesn't require structures to be screened from each other within the sites, and it doesn't require buildings to be screened from public rights away. So it does require parking lots to be screened from public rights away and some internal landscaping, but other than that, we really don't have any buffer requirements in our current ordinance. The comp plan guidance, it is recommended as a highway mixed-use area on our comprehensive plan, and so this use is compatible with that highway mixed-use. The amendment will support the continuation of the existing self-storage on the site, and there will be no impact to the quality or quantity of traffic along 17, which is the main purpose of, or one of the main objectives of the comprehensive plan related to Route 17. And it doesn't affect the number of units constructed on the site. So so staff comments if the amendment is approved, the current site improvements could remain without a zoning requirement for additional landscaping. Since the approved amended site plan illustrates landscaping buffers required by the proffers, we could just include a note in the file that if the board approves this, that those are not required, and the overall site would remain compliant with all other applicable buffering requirements from the proffers or the zoning ordinance. So staff recommended that the planning commission forward the application to the board with a recommendation for approval. Again, it supports the highway mixed-use, with the mixture of uses, it's compatible, supports the goal for compatible development patterns, which do not reduce the 17 capacity or level of service. It's consistent with the business mixed-use designation, aim to continue fulfilling in existing developments where appropriate, and the proposed buffer amendment is consistent with comprehensive plan desire to ensure redevelopment results in minimal negative impacts on road systems and traffic patterns. Because the application doesn't affect condition to use or density on the site, the state code allows the board to waive the public hearing requirements. It is required for the planning commission to recommend that waiver, so we had recommended to the planning commission to waive the public hearing requirements, and they forwarded that recommendation to you. So it's important to note that prior to making a decision on this application, you would have to decide whether or not to waive the public hearing. If you don't waive the public hearing, we'll have to schedule a public hearing. I will say that nobody came to the public hearing at the planning commission. There were no comments. So the planning commission recommended to forward this application to the board with an unanimous vote, and then there was, they voted to recommend a waiver of the public hearing with one vote against that. So that's the end. So again, you have to first decide whether to waive the public hearing, and then if you waive the public hearing, make a decision on the application. The applicant is here, they don't have a presentation, but if you have any questions for them, they are here, Gus and Ray Panos are here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the detailed presentation. I just have a couple of questions. So this buffering condition has been in place since, for 20 years? And you mentioned during your presentation that there, even if this buffering requirement was removed, that there would still be some requirements to have some landscaping in the parking lot and some internal landscaping. Is that correct?
Only for the parking areas, but because they don't have, so the mini storage area doesn't have any onsite parking.
Has any requirements for buffering or vegetation been completed to date?
Yes, some of the buffering along the front, I'm just trying to, they just don't have all the trees.
The picture is better than the red.
The picture.
If you go back one.
Okay, some of the, just some of those trees that are shown in red are there and some are not, so it doesn't provide the complete buffer to screen the mini warehouses, but so that so you see that there are some trees there, but not all of them. And speaking with Mr. Panos, the main thing, he, they have an office in the front, and they also have outdoor storage in front of the office, so he felt he didn't understand the need for screening the building from the road.
Was the original intent of this screening to screen the presence of these storage structures?
Correct.
From 17? And that's been in place for 20 years?
Correct, and it's no longer, well, it's not required for other development.
Anyone else with questions? All right, let's move to comments.
I have mixed feelings about this proposal, and I would say that I would prefer a public hearing. I want to do anything I can to support our business, community, and economic development, but it strikes me as, this has been in place for 20 years, it was part of the plan, it was part of what they agreed to do. I cast no offense towards anyone in the storage business, I have a very large, that I do not own, but there's a very large storage business behind my business. There is buffering between our business and the storage business, and I wish my compatriot, Mr. Hedrick, was here because one of his concerns about the Route 17 corridor is the disrepair of many buildings, the visual look of 17. I'm not suggesting that there's any disrepair for this particular business, but the clear intent of the visual buffering was to shield that business from but the clear intent of the visual buffering was to shield that business from seventeen or to beautify that particular business area. So I think, other than saving some cost, I see the purpose of the buffering. And frankly, I think if they agreed to it twenty years ago, they should comply with the proposed conditions that they used to obtain this zoning change.
I have a question now. When, when did we reduce the amount of buffering that was needed for these buildings? Because I know that we, with some of the overlay stuff, some of the amount of buffering required was reduced. When did that occur?
I should know it by heart, right?
Was that when we went to the HCOD highway corridor overlay district? I think it was like, it was soon after we took.
No.
It was a couple of years.
Probably three or four years.
Yeah, a couple of years after that.
Eight, nine years.
Twenty fourteen, fifteen timeframe is when that happened.
Yes, when Mr. Meyer had just gotten on the board.
Correct.
So just having been here twenty-two years and lived through all this, a lot of things changed too, because the board then allowed, after we had so many rezonings from mini storage, the board now allows them to be as long as their certain distance back. So they're, and then a lot of the landscaping requirements have been taken out of the ordinance since that time.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Did I hear correctly that they had a, the planning commission had a public hearing, and no one showed up?
Yes. Well, the Panos showed up, but no, no.
He doesn't count.
He doesn't count. Okay, thank you.
The irony of the whole situation is, is that there was an existing business there for years. And it was, but it was still zoned SC one, and they had to get it rezoned to B one, although there was an existing business when they bought it. And as Mr. Smith just said, hey, there was no one there. I did ask the question at the planning commission meeting is if they were going to bring down any of the existing shrubs that were there. And they said no, that was not the intent. So.
Mr. Wilmore.
We would need a motion to waive, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I would make the motion that we waive another public hearing for this rezoning.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do I need to say that any other way, or is that good enough for you? Okay.
Ms. Steel, will you pull the board?
You might want to have some discussion.
Oh, that's true.
Yes. I have no further discussion.
I understand your point, Mr. Gibson. We have the planning commission, and they have always done a very good job with what we appoint them to do. And, you know, this was their recommendation for us to waive this, and typically, there's not often times when I have a heartburn with one of their decisions, and I think this is an easy one. If, if this building, you know, was not kept in the condition that it was, I might be considering a different strategy here, Mr. Gibson, along with you. But the way this property has been maintained since they have taken it over from Lambers Building Supply all those years ago, I think they have been very good stewards and very good business folks in our, in our community. But I agree with your concerns that you brought up one hundred percent.
Yeah, and I will make clear that I certainly don't want to suggest that the business owners have kept their business in disrepair or that it are not operating properly, and we appreciate their presence here in the county. But I do just have some concerns about complying with the initial conditions that resulted in the business being placed there.
Mr. Gibson, I'll agree with you one hundred percent on that sentiment, because the length of time that they had to get it done, they'd probably be dead by now, so they should have done it at the time and wished it well. I just, I hate the idea that they didn't do it and that was part of their original agreement with their proffers. But now, since the highway corridor overlay district has changed, it wouldn't be required if it was a new business. And that's the only reason I'm voting in favor of it, because it's changed. For a new person to put it right beside them, they wouldn't need it. But I hate the idea personally that somebody offered a proffer and then, then followed through with it.
And if I may, I believe that they were there and then they took them out, because there were some trees there. And so as they increased the number of buildings and they modified things, they took them out. So they did have site plan approval, and then they did the amended site plan, and they still had to meet those same proffers. So, so you can see some of the trees are pretty tall back there, so they were, some of the trees were installed. And I just also want to say that when staff met with them and, you know, we were talking to Mr. Panos, and, you know, he was asking about flexibility, and we said we didn't, you know, we didn't have the flexibility. But I did say that the board has made some changes, and I did let them know that, you know, we were working on a zoning ordinance update, and there's no new requirements for buffering. So, you know, I just felt that if he wanted an opportunity to come to the board and ask for that, you know, versus asking staff to not, obviously, we'd have to comply, so.
Dr. Orth.
I'll just second Mr. Crisco's comments about the planning commission. Having listened to them very carefully, to their recommendations, generally, I can't think of one or two cases we might have gone in a different route. But generally, we take to heart the hard work they put into looking carefully at every single application. And so, and of course, we work very closely with them for the zoning ordinance. You know, they're hardworking people, and I appreciate their work and also understand, you know, where they're coming from in each one of these votes. So I would be in favor of supporting the waiver of a public hearing.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to waive the public hearing. And the second. Ms. Steel, will you pull the board?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. There's an ordinance on page thirty-seven.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Ms. Steel, will you pull the board?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
No.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is additional ARPA appropriation request for fiscal year twenty-three for court circle lighting and irrigation.
I hope that the board members are pleased with the changes that have been made in the court circle, and we've just got a few punch list items that are being corrected. But it worked very well for the Daffodil Festival. I know that, the new sidewalks, and I'm really eager to see more and more people in the circle and using the sidewalks. As you'll recall, when we went into that project, we were underfunded. We got additional money from the state, but we still were underfunded, and we had to sort of rob Peter to pay Paul. We had the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had set aside for irrigation and lighting in the court circle. At this time, and I asked Ms. Rizzio for an update, you know, as of today, because we still have some, some of the contingency things to work out. But what was left of that hundred and fifty that was never touched was thirty-three thousand. And with the fifty of requesting tonight that's available from the ARPA money that can be spent in the same manner as general government revenues, with that fifty, thirty-three, we will have somewhere between nine and twenty-two thousand dollars left over from this project out here, meaning that we'll have between ninety-two and a hundred and five, which is still not what the original budget was. The reason that I'm asking now and not waiting for the next fifty to come in, it's been pledged, but it hasn't arrived, is we'd like to keep going with the project. We have meetings next week with lighting companies to come out and do demonstrations. My hope would be that we could get all the work done with the full amount of this fifty and the money that's in the bank. But whatever we would know with the cost estimates and be able to come back to the board if it wasn't enough, or we might be able to do one and not the other. And lighting is a priority with the sidewalk changes. Leaving out of here at night, there are some very, very dark spots, and we'd like to have the courthouse be safer, first of all, and also it's very attractive to have the lighting too. And the irrigation conduit was put in, so at whatever point we can get the funding, it won't involve too, too much of digging up. It will involve some, though. So there are other ways that you can spend this money, probably fifty thousand. But I was asked, and there's nothing on the list that we had already had, if I've missed something.
No, that.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's, that's why I asked that question, because I was like, you know, if we have this money, is there anything else that we couldn't do? That's why I asked, and I knew we had a couple of big-ticket things that we would, that were like tos. And I appreciate you taking the time and getting those answers, but, you know, that's, that's why I asked it in email, because I was like, there's, there's no need to really discuss it if there's not another project that would even qualify. So I appreciate that answer.
I appreciate you asking, because it made me go back and look to make sure. I have my own bias, I know that.
I mean, it's, it's, this county's been your baby for many years, so I, I under, we all understand, Ms. Steel.
So my request tonight is that you would consider appropriation of these fifty, the fifty thousand dollars for the court circle. It says lighting, but it would be lighting and irrigation as far as we can go with the funds.
So this, this is just half of the hundred thousand, right?
Yes.
So we will still have a discussion on what we do with the other fifty thousand?
Yes, and if a, the bids come in high, I'll come back and ask. But if not, we'll, it can hold on to the money and it can just keep staying there.
So we're focusing principally on, on the lighting issue, which is obviously necessary for safety issues.
Yes.
And we won't have a final figure until we, you guys meet with those people, correct?
Right. Yeah, there's quite a bit of variability on the amounts and the types of lighting that you do.
I mean, you know, we should be very proud that very few towns have a main center circle and main street like we have. And anything we can do to enhance its visibility and safety for people to come in and walk, especially in the evening hours, I think it's definitely a plus for this, this county.
And I could make a joke about the spotlights that are going to be on the walls to keep people from hitting it, but hopefully more lights.
How much extra is that?
We do have lights already. They don't work.
A little, a little automatic bumper put up, it would just bounce them off, so it wouldn't even hit them if, if we could, like the, like the squirrel device Mr. Orth had at his house.
I could say through all my history research, this is one of those where history repeats itself, because it's been happening since it was a wooden fence.
Mr. Wilmore.
I am available to vet eligibility.
I was getting ready, that was my question.
I have not vetted this.
Yeah, and I, and I apologize. I should have said that in the very beginning. I know that this was a little bit more of a lenient interpretation, but I still would like for the county attorney to rule on it. And that can be part of the amended motion if you wanted to put that in there and just say.
Should we just hold off voting on it? When do you need this by?
Well, I don't, it, with our having so many extra meetings, I might be able to slide something in if we had to have. I just, I can't go out to bid without having money in the budget.
When are you planning on going out to bid?
Well, we have two companies coming in the next two weeks, and it'll probably still take several weeks. We're running our CFO ragged between being a purchasing director and CFO. So it might be the May meeting would be fine, but I'm really hoping we can finish the project in this fiscal year.
We've got the April work session.
Yeah.
Mr. Gibson.
I was just going to suggest, suggest that the amendment could be that the approval of the funding could be contingent upon vetting by the county attorney. And if it is vetted and approved, then, then we could move forward rather than delay.
Is that a motion?
I would make that a motion.
In a second.
Okay. Ms. Steel, will you pull the board on that motion?
I will do that, and thank you for accommodating me on that. Okay, Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Steel, looking at the next item, seeing that there's two members that are absent tonight, do you have any heartburn with moving this to tomorrow night as part of the budget deliberation? Because I think everyone is due tomorrow night, and I think it would be better to move that.
That's fine. That's absolutely fine. I feel bad about them missing, so that would be good.
So that would move us to board appointments? And so we'll just move, we can move this, item C, eleven C, to the first item, not the first, but close to the first, tomorrow night. If you could just redo just this, just the cover sheet. And then we'll just, since it's not presented, we'll just make the motion to approve the agenda as presented tomorrow night. Okay. Board appointments?
Since Mr. Hedrick is not here, I see that Mr. Williams has agreed to sign up for the Clean and Green Advisory Committee. I will make the motion to approve, to appoint Mr. Williams to the Clean and Green.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Anybody else? We've got historical committee.
I've made further pleas for the historical committee, no takers yet.
All right. And JJ, Dr. Orth, you've got utilities. We've all got recreation and real estate for tourism. All right, we have a motion in a second for Matthew Williams for the Clean and Green Advisory Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilmore?
Glad to be here, sir.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Tell Puhai. Boards and commission reports? Supervisor discussion?
So tomorrow, we have Mr. Dawson.
No, that's the ten.
That's next week. Tomorrow, we'll go over some of the just adjustments and changes that have been happening since the budget was first presented.
It'll be here the tenth.
And then it'll be y'all discussing what you want to talk about.
There's no closed meeting, reminder tomorrow night at six o'clock here in the courthouse. We're going to start our budget deliberations. Is there only one other item on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.